The study session on the Forest Lake Improvement Board, Lower Long Lake Improvement Board, and Upper Long Lake Improvement Board. We could first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as we're all.
So with study sessions, we do them a little bit differently where public comment isn't right away. It's after some information's been given so you can comment on what you see. So we'll start first with calling a meeting to order and then reviewing of the posted meeting notices. Phil Brook?
Okay. The three lake boards that are represented here, there was a notice for each of those, timely posted in appropriate places. And there is a form present for Forest Lake, Lower Lake, and Upper Long Lakes.
Nice to see everyone together. So next, we will go to the history of the operating protocol of the weir. We have our Director Noah Maholsky, Director of DPW.
Thank you. I'll give you an overview as I know things out there and the history. I've been involved since 2007. When I started at the township, I was not involved in the negotiations in 2019 to, for the township to take over responsibility to this. That was Leo Savoy and Tom Trice, my predecessors. So I just wanted to put that in there. All right, so people don't know maybe what a weir is. A weir is a water level control structure. They can take many forms. The one on the left of the picture is actually the weir that we're talking about. The one on the right, upper, is kind of what the weir used to look like. It used to be a couple of slits with birds placed down in them to control the structure of the lake. So that shows you kind of, it can be a small wooden dam to a large apparatus like we have on Forest Lake. Then it's important to talk about the watershed here because it is a highly urbanized watershed and it's a, it's not just Forest Lake. It controls, as you guys know, it controls other lakes in the chain. So Hammond Lake, Turtle Lake, Upper Long Lake, Lower Long Lake, Island Lake, all are tributaries to this. Square Lake is also in the watershed, but it's skipped around by the drainage coming off of Telegraph Road. Island Lake has its own weir. That's the one in the picture there with the snow cover. And then Hammond Lake has a standpipe which they recently reconstructed, which would have been two years ago or so. And that's important because it adds to the flashy nature of this watershed that we're talking about here. The old standpipe was rusted and plugged and they basically put a brand-new pipe in there. And so now where the muck and the condition of the pipe used to hold water back a little bit longer, now that water goes directly in and at a faster rate. Also, the lakes are regulated by the DEQ and Eagle and the township, plus the down, the water, receiving waters for this weir are also regulated by the township and by Eagle. There's streams that are downstream of it, wetlands, floodway, floodplain. There's the Forest Lake Golf Course. There's Franklin Road, which has had issues. We had to pump water across that roadway in 2011. And then Loscher Road, if we put too much water into the downstream system, we overtop Loscher Road. And I'll show you where that happens as well. So it's a large urban watershed. If you think of a watershed, it's a bowl, okay? And any of the water that falls inside the bowl goes into that watershed. And any water that falls outside the bowl goes to another watershed, okay? So it's many thousands of acres of land drained to these lakes and are part of this system, okay? In addition, many other small ponds, tributaries, pipes, storm drains, road drainage, all those things are associated and also make this an urban flashy-type environment. And when I say flashy, I mean subject to the rain and dry in a very large way, right? When rain falls, it goes directly into the system and you may go from no trickle in a stream up to a raging torrent, right? So that occurs quickly in an urban environment because if you think about how, you know, before humans came and modified this area, it all fell on regular land and a lot of it soaked in, but it did take a lot longer to get to the streams in the past, right? So now when rain falls on parking lots and rooftops, it's concentrated and it's quickly put into that system. And that becomes key. Main variables on the input side, weather, timing, and type of precipitation. Again, how, what's the duration of the precipitation event? What is the makeup? Is it snow? Will it be held on the land? Or is it liquid? Will it go into the system quickly? Outputs, evaporation, irrigation, the weir itself, right? So riparians have the right to draw water from the lakes. Also, the water evaporates and also the water goes over the weir. Just for points of clarity, we had multiple events. Again, the flashy nature, we've had multiple events since I've been involved with the weir where it's overtopped Club Drive, 11, 12. I'll talk about more of the dates later, but 11, 12, 21, 11, 18. 2022 was an extreme drought year, so we were the other way. But 2012 for entrance, second driest year on record. 2022, last summer, ninth driest year on record. 2021, seventh wettest year on record. 2011, number-one wettest year ever for Metro Detroit. 2018, number-two wettest year ever in Metro Detroit. Why? We can debate that all day, but reality, it's here. Okay, back to the watershed. You see the lakes that I mentioned, the Long Lake, Forest Lake. Forest Lake's right here. That's where the weir is. All these other lakes are tributary to that system, right? And all the water, you'll see it in the kind of downstream map, all the water flows southeast to basically Detroit down there, or southeast to tributaries to the Rouge River.
And we're the headwater of the Rouge River.
Correct. Yep, yep. The middle branch of the Rouge.
Right.
So, yep. So there's Wicksums, the headwaters of the upper branch over there, and the lower branch starts in Ypsilanti area, a little bit more towards Detroit, but there's an outlet from the wastewater treatment plant down there. So downstream map, you can see, here's that, here's the weir here, that location. This is where it crosses Franklin Road. Down here is where it crosses Loscher Road, okay? This whole system, Werner Ponds up in here, tributary to this area. The big pond across the street from the township, tributary to that area as well. But this, it's key to just consider Telegraph was at an elevation where we did not flood Telegraph in 2011, but we did flood and clothe Loscher Road in 2011. Again, one of the number-one wettest year on record, and that was the year we were pumping water over Franklin Road and all the issues that come along with that, noise, people not happy about that, all those things. So again, this is an actual picture before reconstruction, so doesn't take an expert to understand that that's not in good repair. So historically, again, the weir was a set aboard, slipped into a slot, similar to that Island Lake control structure. The structure controlled by adjacent residents, Ron Cuzinow, for a number of years. There was a Forest Lake Outlet Management Association formed that took, that was in play during SAD to rebuild the weir and then also in the management of that and the transfer of that power or jurisdiction over to the township in 2019. So clearly structural issues were present. If, so Forest Lake's a man-made lake. If you know that area, the Lake of the Woods is a significant amount lower than the actual Forest Lake, right? And Club Drive makes up the dam for that area, right? So the concern is that high water levels, one of the concerns is, is that high water levels, A, it overtops that road, there's a washing-out potential of that road. It's a core log road under there, so there's intertwined logs that are laid down in the wetland and then the road was built on top. I mean, it's a, if you drive it, it's banked like a racetrack, Club Drive in there because the one side of the road's sinking. So maintenance was required, right? If this structure at the time failed, it would drain the lake significantly. Clearly, Island Lake has an average depth of like 10 feet, so you'd drain much of Island Lake and Forest Lake. Clearly, a lot of the areas in the canals and stuff like that would be drained if that blew out. We've been cognizant of this issue. We have applied to FEMA three times to try to get disaster mitigation funding, but it doesn't, it's not been passed due to whatever cost-benefit analysis they do at FEMA and the state police. So we have looked for funding to place sheet piling along the roadway there to protect the road from blowing out. FEMA doesn't see the benefit to that project, was layman's terms of how I can say it. Prior to 2019 and us coming into play, and that is another actual picture of the weir down there, so all the cement on the side sloughing off, you can see rebar sticking out, bad-looking situation. We have helped in the past with vectoring. There's a, few years ago, maybe 2019, the inlet became plugged. We vectored that inlet out. There was a high, water was flowing over Club Drive at the point, at that point. Unclogging, sandbagging of Club Drive, sandbagging of the wetlands adjacent to Club Drive, and then the pumping over the road in 2010, 2011 that I mentioned. So then the SAD, the process started in 2006 when the residents who controlled this private structure at the time asked the township to rebuild the weir through a special assessment district. Importantly, that did not include replacing or servicing the inlet pipe to the weir, which is depicted right here on the map. So that is a piece of infrastructure that's original to the weir that was not touched in the SAD. So that may be an issue in the future, may or may not be. Operational protocol was also kind of part of that management association, the SAD project bringing in HRC, the township engineer, to design the weir. There were these protocols made, which will, were included in the pack and then we'll talk more about in a little bit. But the level settings are based largely on Ron's operation of the weir in the past and things we've learned in the overtopping of the road and the infrastructure issues that that brings. So then the agreement itself, there was no historic easement for access to the property of the weir, so that was a concern. There was an operations protocol and it wasn't codified and put into place as the operational, true operational protocol, the weir. Very narrow language for the annual O and M of the weir. And so it earmarks $1,500 annually without kind of approval from the board, but if it goes above that, like let's say this inlet pipe, which I've noted there, has to be rebuilt or lined or even just inspected, that would probably be over $1,500. So the process there, if you've read the agreement, is to approach the lake boards with that cost and get an approval. If they don't approve that, then I don't know what happens. The pipe continues to be in the situation that it's in. We enlist the help of Forest Lake Country Club because they're repairing right on the, right on the weir, they can be out there every day to monitor it. They can augment my ability and my staff's ability from the township to be out there and be on top of the change. Like, we're gonna, he's gonna raise the weir tomorrow and like, he does that operation, Ryan Moore at the Forest Lake Country Club, because they're there 24, 24/7 basically. And that's tied to the access easement and operating protocols that the township has an inter-agency agreement with the country club in that regard. So there is some leeway within the agreement and we do apply logic to that, so I did mention how he's raising the weir up tomorrow. So we had the back-to-back, the ice storm and then the six-inch storm mid-March. At that timeframe, it pushed the lake up to about 39 inches, right? So there's protocol to kick in summer months to lower it down and start to pass water through the weir at that point. We've done that. It's down, it's like 32.9 today after the two inches that we got this weekend. So we, the protocol says that once it gets to 34, you close it back up. So tomorrow, he's gonna be closing that back up. Then we basically, you know, when I talked to Ryan today, there's seven, after tonight's fraction of an inch, about .16 inches of rain, we're not expecting rain for the next seven days, right? So I'm comfortable closing that up at that point because I feel like we're not gonna get the precipitation over the next few days. That would cause, because the reason we opened it up back in, after those back-to-back storms is the water was starting to go over Club Drive. It was about halfway down Club Drive at that point, so, and it was flowing in the little canal next to the berm there. So it was going to be going over Club Drive because of the snow melt from those two back-to-back storms. And I think we got some rain actually, like three days after that second storm. So there is some logic and some kind of triggers that come into play if we reach those high-water or low-water marks. The protocol is designed to keep a narrow range in the water depths, right? And we understand there's people who want the, there's probably equal numbers of people who want it higher or lower the lake. A lot of people, especially people who want it lower are on the canals, right? Because they can't make it under that bridge. But if it's too low on the canals, there's a cement base under the bridge, so if it's too low, then you hit your motor on the cement base for the bridge. So we tried, A, number one, it's weather, and we tried to, we want to protect the infrastructure, right? The homes, the road blowing out. Secondarily is enjoyment of the lake. And again, the infrastructure is the top, but we do have leeway within the protocol. I know there's suggestions on how to change that. I would defer to Mark on what mech, because one of the things that's interesting to me is the entity that turned over, Forest Lake Outlet Weir Management Association no longer exists, right? They turned over that authority to the township, then they disbanded. So, you know, that brings in an interesting lawyer question on how that, how we undo that, if there are even our modifications to be done to this, right? What authority do I have to even modify the plan that's part of a legal agreement? So what I, the mechanism I would suggest, again, any legal hurdles we gotta get over, but would be to bring in an engineer and to have them take a look at it again. Now, HRC did review this operational protocol two different times, in 2010 and in 2015. And I know the operating protocol was not officially accepted by the management association until 2019 when they entered into this agreement with the township. So there was some negotiation on that plan before it came to our, you know, and there was some revision again, because the engineers got brought in twice on it. So that's, I was, now, again, I wasn't involved in the negotiations in 2019 to bring this into the township's purview. Before that time, it had always been, this is private, this is a piece of private infrastructure, stay away from it at the township, other than the emergency unclogging and that type of stuff that we would do out there, so.
That it?
That's it.
All right, so then what we'll do is we'll open up public comment, get some comments, and then the board can have an open discussion. All right, so if anybody is here for public comment, please come on up to the podium to state your name and which lake you're looking to talk about and how you feel about the weir.
I'd like to make a comment.
We are not, now, we're the, we're the part of the board, so you will get a chance when the board talks, but this is about public comment first. And just seeing if these two gentlemen are not interested. Are you, are you interested? Okay. And I know some of the board members were taking notes, so we will definitely all have a chance to, to talk when it's our turn.
The only thing we ask is, it is three minutes, and you may have questions for the board, but we'll answer those questions or not during our discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here, there?
Right there where you are.
That's good.
Thank you.
So my name is Jim Whalen. I live on Upper Long Lake and being, I know the statement was made about the, some of the people on the canals want the water lower. Up in our canal, we want the water up higher. We went through a dredging project years ago, but it hit hardpan a much higher depth than I think was expected. We spent a lot of money to do that and, and if the water gets down too low, it's very difficult to get through the, through the canals and/or getting our boats on and off lifts or that type of thing. So we would, a lot of our neighbors keep saying we should, we'd love to see it set at 36 as a target depth, and I know that the, the depth is like 34 that we're trying to hit in the summer. The big thing is though, when we get these dry summers like we always do, and as was mentioned, last year was a drier than normal summer, we were down probably to 28 or 26 or something like that, and it was very difficult getting boats in and out of the canal, so it really hindered our use of the lake. Or, you know, it made it difficult, let's just put it that way. And I know some people had problems getting their boats on and off hoist. The, the concern that I had heard was that there was a missed, missed reading of the, the depth of the water last year, which made some, change, change was made in the weir and we were down like two inches lower than we should have been at the target at the beginning of the year, and we were down that two inches, two inches for the whole rest of the year. One of the things I talked to Ron about was putting in some type of a automated measurement system so we had more accurate readings of that. And I was, I would propose that we look at something like a web camera that's focused on the, the measurement device all the time, so at any point in time, we can go out to a website, see what the actual measurement is. So, you know, I get comments from my neighbors all the time, "The water looks too low, what's going on?" You know, there's a lot of concern. So I try and answer that when I can or go out to one of the measuring devices and, and just check and so I can get answers back to, to my neighbors, because they know I take a, keep a lot of notes on that. I try and get rainfall measurements for Ron and provide it to him, and he, he keeps track of the, the measurements of the actual water levels. So I think we just need to do a little better job of keeping those, the heights that we need, because when it gets extra low, I get complaints and, and because people are concerned about the boating issue. So I think that's my, my key things and I guess, well, the other thing, it seems to me, the measure, the, the guidance was set as, you know, putting in two-inch boards, and here we have a crank thing that we paid for, and there's never a thing, never a guidance that say, go down a half inch, go up an inch. It's, you know, very broad guidance and going up two or four inches or something like that. I think we ought to try and be a little more accurate, a little more fine-tuning of the measurements.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak? No? Okay. So we'll close public comment, and now we can take it to the board. I know everybody has a lot to say probably, so we could start, if anyone wants to volunteer to start first, or if you have questions of Noah too, we can have Noah come back up. I think, Mike, I see you had.
Yeah, I had, I got a couple of questions, you know, I'm just curious. So if you, would you put up the map again? So Hammond Lake has a control. Of course, there's no control structure there.
Correct. There's a small pond in between the two, like across Square Lake Road that Hammond goes into first, then the Turtle Structure. And there's also a county drain that empties into Turtle Lake. That's the one that bypasses Square Lake Road.
Okay.
Hammond, Hammond Lake drains into our lake over by Jim's house.
Well, there's a little pond that it goes through and then down to that area. Yep, yeah, exactly.
Eventually, but remember, there's a lot, that's why we're trying to, a lot of times people focus on their spot. We need you to see it's a lot bigger than one lake.
Where's the county drain?
It affects someone before you.
It's, so, here, I can see it in the downstream map, I think. So the county drain bypasses right here. That's Square Lake.
Okay.
It takes all the drainage from Telegraph Road and the Miracle Mile up there, and this is the county drain. It comes right through that neighborhood right there and that empties it.
And that's, that goes into Turtle.
Yep, and that, yeah, that's where the complaint's about salt from Telegraph Road. Yep, yep. And that's why it actually bypasses Square Lake. They had a, they, back in the day, they got MDOT to bypass their lake so they didn't get all that water dumped into there. But you can actually see there's a safety path right on Square Lake Road that goes over that drain. It's a 20-foot-deep ditch there. It's a huge drain, so it handles a lot of flow coming through that area. So, yeah, and then Hammond dumps in over, that's Hammond right there, and dumps in over on this side, comes down.
So we've never had anybody try to make a model of the, of the, of the lakes and the, all the inputs and?
No, I mean, again, with all these lakes involved, I don't know that there's ever been a hydrologic study overall to look at the, you know, overall inputs and outputs of these, this lake system.
And do we know, when we talk about set the weir to 34 inches, do we know what the, the absolute elevation of that is? Does somebody know what the absolute elevation of that is?
I'll have to defer to him, because I was not in his spot.
There were engineering, yeah, we could get, I don't know where the plans are for the SAD, but it would be on the engineering plans.
It's published. I don't know it from the top of my head, it's like 900 feet above sea level, you know, but, but somebody has compared the, the measurement device with the sea-level device.
Okay.
You know, so, but, and I don't actually have that data with me.
Okay.
And I thought it was kind of irrelevant for us anyway, but somebody, somebody has done that.
Well, it's irrelevant for us unless Club Drive is in fact sinking on one side.
Right, I mean, the datum for the weir will be in the engineering plans. The datum they used will be in the engineering plans, so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Noah, I, I thought you did a great job, and thank you. So two, maybe three questions. So this new pipe on Hammond Drain, or Hammond Lake, that's causing this to come in faster, that's draining into Turtle Lake?
That's draining into this, this upper system right here, right? So there's Turtle Lake.
Upper Long Lake.
Upper Long Lake. So Turtle Lake does have a weir, but we've never been able to access it. So even when Tom was here and, you know, all of this, Turtle Lake does have a weir, and because they're so very private, we've never been able to see that weir. My hunch is that with the advent of this new pipe, it probably pushed some sludge through, and so I, I think that is a reason that we're getting a faster.
It's definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so, so again, I don't know, again, legally, what we're allowed to do, but if we could ever get anyone to investigate what's happening on that Turtle Lake weir, we might have some information. I don't know what we would do with that.
And that's why we're bringing you all together, because remember, this is all private.
Right.
Although I would love you to open up a boat launch, and then we can definitely talk about the township. So this is private, we need to probably bring you all together to talk about if you want to do.
Turtle Lakes never come to the table.
Okay.
So we, we even, so on Forest Lake, on that, you know, the opposite end of where I am, there are Turtle Lake residents, right, that, that have houses there.
Right.
We've, we've reached out to them, we've asked them to have somebody, you know, get permission to investigate. Terry Koonahan could give you all the, much more information than you probably want to know about that, and we've never been granted access. I know that from the POA or whatever you call that, other board.
Depending on what access and what you're interested in, I have friends who live in there.
Yeah.
So I think if we were clear of what we need and what we want.
We just want to see what it does and how it operates.
Okay.
I think that would help potentially.
And they, there's a large conservation easement over Turtle Lake and part of the development agreement for it, so there may be even information on the DEQ, you know, they had to go through some, jump through some hoops to be able to build that development. Maybe there's some protocols in that or information and even their wetland permitting.
We're looking to get access to look at the weir?
I think just to give us some information about what's going on with that weir.
Okay.
It might help us to, as this gentleman said, have a little bit more precise control, potentially. The other thing you mentioned is about legally with the Eagle. What are we allowed to do or not allowed to do where that overflow sort of, I call it a ditch, right? So when it goes over the berm, which Eagle has told us we're not allowed to touch, what are we allowed to do? So for instance, when Club Drive was closed, they put up some big road signs, I don't know who's in charge of that. Well, there are road signs now flat down in that ditch.
Okay.
That, that are, I guess, obstructing it, and I don't know what we're allowed, you know, road signs, I'm sure we're allowed to remove.
Yeah, I mean.
What happens when the trees fall?
Yeah, you could, that little swale ditch along the side there, we've dug that out over the years to promote flow from that. That is not considered a wetland, that, it's really a conveyance there. It could be all piped in, right?
Right.
So we've dug that out over the years, we've raked it out, any trees, even if a tree fell directly into a wetland, as long as you don't disturb the soil. a tree fell directly into a wetland, as long as you don't disturb the soils, you can take that out.
So, I guess my question's maybe the opposite. So, let's say the tree falls and helped us build that berm, which again would help us on the lake, are we allowed to leave it there?
Oh, yeah. There's nothing required, in fact, the DEQ would rather see woody debris in all water bodies, because it provides habitat.
That might help, that might help, you know...
Rather see, fill the whole lake in with plants. And that's a very productive environment in their view, so.
That trees that have fallen.
Yeah, I mean, they want woody debris in there because that promotes the small plant and, you know, the, what do you call them, without a skeleton.
Well, those signs are between the weir and 1337 Club, if...
Yeah, I mean, we'll get it, that would've been our engineering, manage that project or place the sewer on Porter's Lane, which resulted in the closure.
Right, so, they're down on the inlet swale thing. Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah, I have a question on the easement that you have with the, with the landowner, does that easement include the inlet pipe?
I don't believe so. I looked at it this morning, and the exhibits, I don't believe include the inlet pipe.
Because Ryan has to go to the end of the inlet pipe from time to time, and I've done it lately too, to clear the debris. We actually have to go over there to make sure that the inlet pipe is not clogged, particularly in the fall time when branches start to fall down and so on and so forth, or if there's a thunderstorm, branches get in there and...
Yeah, I mean, that's why we've actored it out, and when it got plugged, when you and Tom were out on the end of the dock there that spring morning, and two, you know, like five, six years ago, yeah.
You were there when it was clogged?
Yep.
So, I'm thinking that it's important that we have that easement, because we, or Forest Lake Country Club is maintaining that opening right now.
They are.
Yeah.
They maintain that little dock over the opening and everything.
Well, he had to rebuild it a little bit, because it was unsafe for him to walk out there at the end of that dock.
Yeah, he did it. Ryan and his team.
Ryan did that.
Yeah.
Did you, were coming about what?
Yeah, I've got the easement and the easement references of Forest Lake Control Structure, which shall include the intake and discharge pipe and connect it to the structure. So, it does, I remember that was...
We have all the brains at the table. You all bring something special to the table.
And, you know, that brings up a good point, there are people, like, I went out there two weeks ago, and somebody had cranked it, so there's bike lock on it, right, but it has some leeway, and so somebody cranked it, you know, whoever it was, somebody walked onto the property, trespassed, in my opinion, cranked the weir, so augmented what the setting was versus what it was supposed to be set at, right? So, there are those access and security issues out there as well, so that's just another point to consider. It's, you know, proper to be aware of people out there, because people are currently doing stuff to subvert what the plan is, so.
And it is, even though it may not seem like we could tell, you can absolutely tell when it's been moved from where we leave it.
We have protocol for how we're going to operate it, and when they're not followed, we can tell.
Yeah. Yeah.
You didn't mention when the weir was being controlled, but there was a volunteer on Upper Long Lake in 1988 who kept records of the weir, and basically, the numbers that you're working to, that are in your agreement, are based on data from 1988. Now, of course, they had two-by-fours and two-by-sixes, you know, so, as opposed to what Jim was talking about being precise, all they had was two-by-fours and two-by-sixes to control the water level. But the settings that you've got on your chart right now are basically based on...
Historic data.
Historic data.
Yeah, I mean, it was all from that management group, it was all, you were involved, right, but it never got signed off on, right? But this is the protocol that was accepted when the agreements were made with Bloomfield Township. The question is, if we want to, if you guys desire to change that, what is the mechanism for that?
And would we still stay involved?
And is it possible? These are private lakes.
And also, would we stay involved? Because if you're talking about micromanaging this on a higher level, again, we're using private land here that we are not supposed to be involving public tax dollars on, we obviously can't have somebody micromanaging it, so then you would then consider taking back ownership, and we would be out. So, there is a level where you've pushed it so far that it's no longer legally allowed for our, I don't, we'll talk about like, what's legal, what's not legal, but there are limits to what we are allowed to do, and we are, this protocol falls under what we can do. But if you are talking about somebody out there moving quarter inches, half inches, I'm willing to say that that might be outside of a scope we would ever be able to attest to.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend...
Okay.
No, and...
Or a inch or a half inch, or even one inch.
And generally, right, I manage the weir like they manage any impoundment.
Right.
We need to make room for the winter and the spring rains, right? So, the snow that will fall in the winter, and the spring rains that, in the three-day cycles that you get into in April and May, that we have room in that lake system. Had we held water in that lake system even back when we got all the letters a month ago, and we were at a low water level, we would be flowing over Club Drive right now, right? So, that's why we have to be conservative to protect the infrastructure, and when I say infrastructure, not just that road, everybody's property, all the seawalls, that if that lake gets drained to an extent, then they all fail, right? There's, that's the home values, right? That's intrinsic upon, and that's how any impoundment, that's how, like, if you were desirous of having WRC come in here and make a legal lake level that's set by a judge, then that's how they would manage the lake. They would lower it in the fall to make room for that winter precipitation and the spring rains that are just cyclically expected, so.
And it's funny, because 2021, I don't know if you mentioned that year, but that was an extremely wet year that I will never forget, because being somebody who's downstream on a hill, that all water in the southern end of Bloomfield Township, all of your water comes to us, my house was destroyed, and I don't have a lake, I don't have water sewer, it was literally just water on that, imagine all that water went into your lake. So, it is normal to have higher levels, and that year, people were, right before all those rains, you need to let more water in, you need, and within a week, we got flooded, just literally I have a destroyed house.
So, it flowed over Club Drive twice, and for significant periods of time, you know, at least a month in that second, the July 25th rain event, right? And it was highly concentrated down your way by the...
So concentrated, like on the lake road.
The Franklin cider mill, I mean, these were significant rain events that were, I've heard 100-year rain events, I can agree with that, I've heard 1,000-year rain events recently, even out of some people down in Madison Heights and Royal Oak area.
We had 16 inches in a three-month period that we normally get eight, I think was the norm. We had more than double our rain allotment, and there's nowhere for it to go.
Nineteenth year on record, and I just tried to look, they've been keeping records since early 1900, so.
And that's when we asked Eagle to come out, we paid them to come out, to say, can we, let's say for a better word, fortify the berm, right, so we could hold more water, and nope, they shot us down. Can, because, you know, on the other side of that swale, oh no, that's a wetland, or whatever they called it.
Lake of the woods.
And, no, no, on the Forest Lake, so opposite that little outlet, we had them come out, wasn't, we paid them 100 bucks, wasn't a lot of money, and they literally said, nope, you can't, because that was, that was the original plan, right? I was even going to pay to put in a seawall around the property, and nope, they said no. So, and Olivia from the township talked to them, and we, we got nowhere.
Yeah, and, you know, so the downstream area has its issues as well, right? There was a Chapter 20 drain that was proposed in there in the 70s, it failed to go through. That outlet area is basically choked off wetlands at this point, so it doesn't pass the water efficiently downstream, right? So, then we get a lot of comments about Forest Lake and them desiring to keep the lake low, right? But intrinsically, Forest Lake has floodway within the driving range of their golf course, right? Intrinsically, if you were to, they would want to, if they didn't want a wet golf course, they'd be holding water in the lake, right? Not letting it out through their golf course, right? So, that doesn't hold weight to me. I know Ryan Moore and how we discuss operations of the weir, he doesn't make a move on that weir unless I know about it and vice versa, right? So, he's not out there, hmm, 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 let's see if I can let some water out today, or whatever, you know, the, like, each one of the letters made comments about Forest Lake desiring to let water out of that system. In fact, they would rather hold more water in that carrying system and let it out in the winter per se, so that it doesn't impact the golfers. That being said, it's floodway. Floodway is meant to flood. Floodway is even more than floodplain in a way that it will flood every time it rains, right? So, I don't really have much love either for, if you say to me, "Oh, I'm aggrieved because floodplain floods," well, sorry, you know, buyer beware.
He means that in the most loving way possible, we're softening ourselves, Noah.
We have a great working relationship with the golf course, right? But it is floodway, they know that, right? They know it's regulated as such, so that's just, that's a fact of the matter, you know?
I got a quick question too.
Just to make sure, Ron, do you have some more?
I had a conversation with Ryan today, but I've been working with Ryan ever since he's been doing this project, and we have some recommendations to change the language of the operational control, because he's, he's operating it, so to speak.
Yep.
And I operated it, and I didn't approve the way you guys had written it.
Well, I'll be clear, this was not our work product, this was Terry Koonahan, this was you were involved, the Lake Board, this was not driven, like, the township said, you guys need an operating protocol when we update this weir, HRC was involved, but I have notes from the meetings, it was driven by the Lake Board, it wasn't where the township came in and said, "You're doing it this way," right? This document existed far in advance, so...
I'm suggesting some changes, so it, so it makes more sense.
I'm all for that, right, but I don't know what the mechanism is for that.
So, let me know what the mechanism is, because I'm, Ryan and I are willing to work with you or anybody on that mechanism to get the language more clearly stated, so we operate it the way we want to.
I get it, yep, and I would probably have, like, HRC involved as the, you know, agent of the township.
We don't know who the other entity is, that's what I mean, like, we can't, so let's talk to legal here, what do you do, they don't exist anymore.
Who?
The people who are the other side of this agreement with the township, or Forest Lake...
Forest Lake Management Association.
Yeah, that, they disbanded, so they don't exist anymore. So, that's who we have an agreement with, that's who we have to make changes with, correct?
The only limitation we have on the protocols is the access easement agreement, and the easement that the township has over the private property where the weir is located allows for reasonable access for the necessary maintenance and/or repair, including the maintenance to clear, intended to provide, continuing, intended to provide for the continuing periodic adjustments to the existing control structure. So, that's what our easement grants.
So, could they create, obviously, you can't have just one lake represented, because your lake has different needs than all their lakes, could they create another entity where they're all involved, and then we create a new agreement with that entity?
Well, the problem is, this is the township's access agreement, so to the extent we're using agents like Forest Lake Country Club to do the work when, you know, the township staff's not available to do it every day, that's the purpose of the operating agreement that we have with the Forest Lake Country Club, that's between the township and the country club.
Okay.
So, they're acting as our agent in conformity with the easement. The reason I read that portion about the periodic adjustment, it's not daily adjustment, it's periodic adjustment.
Right.
As necessary. So, we can adjust the protocols, the township can do that. The township established those protocols based upon the input from various parties, we can adjust them, there's no magic to it, but you need to bear in mind that this is not something that we're going to be able to go out on a daily basis to evaluate things, it's periodic adjustments.
Seasonal with a couple randos, but we're not talking even weekly, that won't ever be something that we can take on.
What is the definition of periodic?
So, that gave probably you a way of more than just the two openings, like, probably, because again, you have winter and spring, because again, this is private, and he's a public entity, that periodic gave him...
I don't think we care.
Well, it sounds like some might want a seriously micromanaged, possibly daily, weekly type thing, which we would never be able to agree with, versus some that understand that some years can be higher or lower. So, even each lake has very different ideas of this agreement, so if we were to make changes, I would want someone from every lake represented while I'm, I can't just deal with one lake.
Well, and I would recommend HRC be involved, because I don't want to...
And engineers, right.
Right, and then you get into, okay, who's paying for HRC to be there, right? It's kind of in kind, if me as the township, right?
It wouldn't be us, it would be the SAD, you would, that's what I'm saying, like, all of this does stem where you're all connected, so anytime you're hiring an engineer, you're all connected, so I wouldn't want one lake represented, I think you all have to be represented, because it's you that are affected by it, and it's also you that have to pay for that.
Yeah, the only thing I'm suggesting is that document that came from the township to Forest Lake that said, "Here's how you operate the weir," and periodic, and...
We're fine with that.
March to April, we set it to 28, and then April to May is set to 32, and May to June 1st is set to 34, and then in the Labor Day to November is 32, and then all winter is set at 24. So, that's periodic.
I agree.
We're not, we're not talking half inches or one inch or so on and so forth, that's, that's five different times of the year where we have goals.
Now, remember, the mother nature has different goals too, like, you may want 34, and she may say you get no rain, like, there are some times where I can't do it.
Well, and we had competing, I think, what Danny's saying is, we want to, we want to get all the interests at the table, right? Because even the speaker earlier had different interests than you're talking about, right? So, that's why the interest of getting everybody together. I was concerned about the legal barriers to modifying the agreement, sounds like that's maybe a non-issue. Then it comes down to getting all you guys together, making the investment to, because again, I'm not going to, you know, sit around five people at a table and then make up a new protocol, I'm going to have it sniff-tested by the engineers that were involved on the rebuilding of the weir and the protocol in the beginning, right? So, that's the process, we can be logical, you know, and I just got what your proposal was before I walked in the door, right? So, but we can be logical, we have talked in the past about, hey, we got a lot, you know, this situation's coming up, we should make a move, right? And we've talked about that type of stuff, that conversation is very frequent between me and Ryan, but we can, within the, I've always just been, kind of kept my gutters and my barriers are this protocol, I got some ways, like, the notes at the bottom are some kind of special conditions that have come up over the years, one of them is in play right now, right? So, I've been able to manage effectively that outside of things I can't control, like it not raining, or people, repairians utilizing the water, which is their right, but that obviously has an impact on the quantity of water in the lake, right? If you have 400 homes sucking irrigation water out of the lake, and you've got a ninth biggest drought in Metro Detroit history, that's going to have an impact on the lake level.
That's what I mean.
There was no water going over the weir last summer from June on, right? It was, there wasn't enough water in the lake system, so it wasn't that the weir was set improperly, there was no water going over the weir.
There were some unreal...
Right.
But there are some unrealistic...
34 in the winter, and the water was at 22.
Right.
But there are some unrealistic expectations out there, where we will get calls from people during a drought demanding more water.
Right.
And I was like, I wish I had that power, believe me, but I have very little power, and that's not one of them.
For more, you know, kind of gusto with it, like, I had a home that was built on Bayou Drive that was on the canal. I got a call from lawyers, because when they set the basement for that house, they set it to the historic water level. 2021 happened, higher water table for everyone. Now, they're looking at suing, because the home was built at the elevation of the normal water table, and now the basement's flooding, so they're looking for someone to answer for that, right? And they wanted to hear from me, "How are you, how are you managing the weir? Are you liable for this basement being flooded?" Right? So, that's a concern that other people share on the lake as well, when you talk about keeping the water high, right?
And that's also that balance, that this is one of the very few times we'll touch anything private because of that, because now, when they look for people to sue, who do you think they go to, you know, we're not the ones doing it? So, we have to fight a lot of frivolous lawsuits, and Lake Boards are dealing with that right now, being sued because people assume you have deep pockets, they forget it's residents that are behind the Lake Boards.
And if you look at the...
Sadly, this is happening a lot.
The, you know, the limiting factor is the ability for the weir to pass water, right? And that's what results in the flooding. If we could pass water unfettered, right, and I knew I'm getting two inches, well, I'd drain the lake down the day before and then we'd fill it up with the rain. That's not how it works, right? And we're trying to manage this system, if you look at the protocol of the weir, in a 10-inch window. There's not many impoundments out there that they manage within a 10-inch water window, right? That's very narrow window of operation. To have a 10 inches of leeway between what your maximum and what your minimum should be, right? So that's a, that's asking a lot for a weir that may not be able to pass all that water down in a high water situation.
Is there a normal, when you say that's narrow, is there like a normal?
No, it just depends on the lake system and I'm not even saying that, I mean, that would have to be studied by the engineer, right? And you, they'd look at historic rain data, they look at levels, they look at what the watershed area is, right? Again, because if you're draining thousands of acres of land, that impacts the flashiness of the system.
I mean, we had a period of time in the summer when all this evaporation happens and you're watering the golf course. Water level didn't change because the water level was high in Hammond Lake, Turtle Lake.
It satisfied the demand.
They were, they were dumping it into us as fast as we could drain it out. And we had to drain wide open and yet it didn't change for a long period of time because our input tank, our input thing is too small.
And you're getting, you know, you get delayed, the rain, even like ditches are still running from the rain we got on Monday night, right? And they're still running with water in them. And that's because we're in a spring saturated, the ground can't take any more water at this point. We're in those three-day rain cycles where you kind of have a chance of rain every three days, right? So, and I'm kind of a weather nut. It's kind of part of my job too because the winter, I'm I'm responsible for deploying the snow crews out there, right? So I'm keenly aware of the precipitation in the winter. And then because of the weir, that follows into the spring for me, right? And that's when I'm looking at the, like again, I got dry weather coming next seven days. I don't know what it's going to do after that seven, but at this point I'm comfortable raising that weir up. The level that the weir will be raised to will not pass any water because it's like at 32.9. We'll raise it to the protocol 32. It'll, it'll stay right there around 32, right? And then we'll see what's going to happen after that next seven days, right? If we get into another-
I just measured it today. It's 31 and three quarters.
We were out there yesterday. Was it yesterday afternoon, right? And it was, you know, 32.9 when we were there. So that makes sense, right? Went down about an inch, right? But that's the limiting factor is that ability to pass that water through.
So if you're, are you ready for us to go to the next one or do you have another question?
I just wonder, what's the next step on this change?
Well, first we haven't heard everybody's ideas first and, and we don't vote on anything here because you can't vote at study sessions. But do you have any more questions and such for Noah before we go to Effie?
No.
And then we'll open up discussion again.
I, I have several concerns with what you mentioned with inlet pipe. And then with FEMA refusing to recognize that we have a potential disaster area with Club Drive, the dam.
I think it was not, I think they understand there's a potential for an issue, but the cost benefit analysis didn't. Like they don't care if a golf course floods because you're not ruining houses.
But they would be ruining houses if Club Drive disintegrates and then all of Forest Lake drains out.
Believe me, we, we understand the need. It's the state agency and the federal level that it, our application falls for.
So are we- Care that we flooded in '21. They told us house insurance is for that.
Okay, so do we have a plan to re-approach them?
No, that costs money. We've been there three times. The state police have told us it's not a winner.
State police can-
They manage, they manage FEMA funds for the local entity. They have primacy on behalf of FEMA, the state police, as our emergency management entity.
Okay.
Yeah, anything disaster related goes through them.
Okay, so that's one approach. Another approach would be the tri-partnership responsible for roads.
What do you, what do you mean?
I mean, like who would look at Club Drive, that section of Club Drive to see what needs to be shored up?
So Terry Cunahan wrote a letter to the road commission in like 2007 that said, you know, if, if your road blows out and drains the lake, we're going to hold you responsible. The road commission wrote back to Terry Cunahan and said, if your lake blows out our road, we're coming after you to repair our road.
Okay, so, but now, okay. We've taken the control of the weir out of private hands.
Correct.
And you're managing it very appropriately from what I understand and what I've read. And I also trust Ryan's skills. But I'm still concerned about the integrity of that road. So I think for us not to address that as a 911, top of the chart issue in the next year or two is like sticking our heads in the sand. I don't want to be the next Midland. I have friends up there. And that's exactly, and, and I don't think the township wants that to happen. I don't think the county wants that to happen. I don't think the state would want that to happen. So where do we go next to address shoring up that road so we don't face this issue?
The road-
Obviously, the road commission, okay. So then that's what I would like to talk about is how do we do that?
That would be through an SAD, through the road commission?
Ah, they would, I don't know. I mean, it's their road, so.
Yeah.
So if you want to talk to the road commission, you would go to the road commission meeting. It'd certainly help you do that.
Okay.
It's a new ballgame since 2007, so it's worth, worth a conversation. I have no idea how it would go, but it's worth a conversation.
Gary's really open over there. He's been, Gary's-
Well, I just feel like, you know, that's like the 800-pound elephant in the room. Like this is the biggest issue.
It's one of them for sure.
You can be sure that there's many different viewpoints on it, but certainly they should know your, your feelings about it.
Well, I don't think, I think it's beyond feelings. It's, it has to do with structural integrity.
Right, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of ways of looking at it and they may not look at it the same way you do.
She's trying to, yeah, she's trying to say she'll be an intermediary though.
Oh yeah, I'm happy to facilitate it, but there's no guarantee of the-
I, I understand, but I think unless we all sit down at the table to have the discussion to begin with.
Well, right, if you haven't talked to them since 2007, that was a long time ago.
Right, and those were different people. So we're of a different mindset. And I'm not a lone cowboy out there. I, I don't want the homeowners putting their hands on the weir. I want the system that we've established here. It has to do a lot with the liability. It's also why we can talk to the road commission and say, hey, Bloomfield Township is managing this. Our hands are not there. We don't have that liability that you thought we were causing in the past. So I think maybe with some more open minds and some common sense, maybe we can re-approach.
Yeah, certainly. And I think you guys carry weight as a group of residents and a larger, like it's not just one person, right? You represent a lake board. I think that carries weight, right?
Right.
And, you know, we have meetings regularly with the road commission, so we can mention that as a concern too. But I think the, you know, you guys reaching out to them and getting, getting them to the table would be-
Well, don't you have a review coming up with the road commission?
We do, we don't have it open to the public, but we can mention and connect them to them.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's almost like the lead thing and Flint helps everybody to explain the importance of keeping lead out of water now, right? But yeah, people see the Midland occurrence, there are differences, but it's very, that's fresh in people's mind, right? And that makes an impact for sure.
And it is worth coming to the table. The worst they could say is no. I mean-
Right. And know and why, right? Because then when it does blow out, then you got a, something to go on, right? And then, or maybe dig into why their opinion was. Like their opinion that if your road blows out, you know, or if your lake blows out our road, that might be in a circumstance where they were being accused at that point on, right?
And we're certainly not going to do anything like that. Like I said, these are, we have a different mindset.
Now, the, I would love to get you connected with them and Marsha can help as well. The one thing I want to let you know though, there is a chance that they will say this is an SAD process. Because typically, although the county owns the roads, they don't have the money and infrastructure to fix the county amount of roads we need fixed. So the reason we have so many meetings is Bloomfield Township has the most amount of SADS. We have tons of people fixing their roads because they're 50, 60 years old. And they, they waited and nobody came to fix them, so now they're fixing them. So we do have a lot of meetings with them. Gary has been wonderful and easy to work with. We even set up new protocols of how we can, can get things going. So there is a chance that, you're right, there are different minds there right now. It's just I do want to always, I'm always the like, let's set expectations is there is a chance though, if you're looking to get them to replace the road, they might do that at the expense of an SAD. Or they may say, you're right, this is something we'll fix. But I just want to make sure that when we meet, we go there, like you said, with open minds, open hearts.
Right, right, right. I just, I, I want some common sense. And your other point, the inlet pipe needs replacing or whatever. And you said the lake boards need to approve. That is so inefficient.
Well, that's in the agreement.
That's in the agreement.
I don't have, I don't have access to your guys' accounts for the money and the township can't fund it. So I have a limit of 1,500 bucks, but I'm not going to let a pipe fail. But that's the next thing on the horizon, right? That to get it inspected. I don't even know how much that costs. But if I can do it for the 1,500 that's allowed to me without having to go back to the lake board, I will do that, right? But if I need additional funding because it costs $3,000, I'll have to go back to the lake board. If they say no, I have no remedy, you know, to recover costs. And then we, again, public dollars on private property, there'd have to be some extenuating circumstance, like an emergency or something at that point to push it. But there is no smoking gun at this point. But a decision was made not to replace that inlet pipe. That's why I was noting that. And that's, because that's the most likely issue that we have coming up.
And just to note, we're not even, we don't take in that $1,500 that we could be for managing because we do want to leave that there for fixing things. So I don't think we've ever actually collected the 1,500 from-
Well, I mean, the maintenance that we've done has amounted to preventative, it's greasing.
So we don't actually take-
We replaced the handle on the valve, right? We did that all gratis, that, you know, I didn't have, charge you back for my mechanic welding a widget together.
And because I'm new, how many lake boards are tied into the cost of the weir?
Three that are here now.
He's our captain. He's our-
The three? Okay.
Forest Lake.
Okay, so Hammond and Turtle don't have any skin in the game?
Do they have their own weirs?
They have to maintain their own weirs.
Okay, all right. So it's us three. Okay.
Should there be four? Should there be four?
And Island. So there's four.
They definitely have.
So Island has its own weir, so, you know, they would still hold, they'd still hold water even if this, you know, blew.
Is Island part of it or because they have their own?
Oh, it's part of the system. But it wouldn't drain their lake.
So he has the agreement, shows it just the three of you.
Okay.
So it's according to the agreement, just the three. Yeah.
Do you remember who paid for the weir?
Ah, the residents. An SAD.
Township can't pay for any of this stuff, yeah.
If the inlet pipe needs to be replaced, it would be the lake boards that would pay for it.
Yeah, certainly. What I'm limited by is without having to go back to the boards and convince you guys that this is a project you should spend more money on, 1,500 is my limit. That's, I'm just a parameter of the, you know, of the agreement. And I have to jump through more hoops and convince the lake board that it's a, and I hopefully, if we got an emergency and the pipe's failing, hopefully it's easy to convince you guys. But if I can't, then that's-
No, no, that isn't necessary. We're all, you know, we all understand and we all trust what you're doing.
Okay, I'm answering why I can't go with 1,500.
There isn't going to be any argument. You come, just communication. For me, that's all I need. It's proper communication. I have full faith in the people involved.
And we are open, like, give me a call, you know?
Okay, great.
433-7728.
And you'll be sitting next to me at that table with the road commission, right?
Well, I agree that that road needs to be addressed, right? And I don't think if we took them for a ride in the car on that road that they would say, oh, this is great.
Yeah.
So I don't, I think it's like a red thumb sticking out there.
We'll be your first advocate at the meeting that we're having is it next week or the week after for our strategy plan?
Great.
Because we meet with them annually, but then we also, because we have so many SADS, we're with Gary a lot, so.
Well, and my concern is that I would have an issue out there. I would come to the lake board and they would say no, right? And then I would have to look at a mechanism to force that repair, right? But I, I think we're all logical people. If I show you a hole in a pipe that's been in there since the 50s, I'm not blowing smoke, right? And I, I gain nothing by another project out there. In fact, it's another project I have to manage. So, I mean, literally.
Okay, Mike?
Can I ask two questions? One, is there any talk about paving Club Drive? I mean, I would just go back for a second.
That's what we're talking about. The RCOC would, might expect you to do an SAD for that.
Right, but I mean, separate from this construction, do they, do they, I mean, Club Drive's not in great shape, so would it come up?
It's a county road and all neighborhood roads are county roads.
Okay.
So that's why we have so many SADS. We have to pay for it ourselves.
So the only real tragedy would here if we repaved Club Drive and didn't reinforce the road.
Right.
That would be a huge mistake.
No, and they would probably build that right into the, into the design.
They would have to take, the base is failing there, right? So they would have to address the base.
Usually build that all into the design. Because they're, they try and design them to last, they, they save 15, but really they want it to last like 40 because they know the next time they're going to be there is a long time, so.
Right, and you know, the Club Drive, so yeah, they want, they have no funding to just replace roads in earnest, you know? Then you'd kind of have the issue of the Forest Lake Country Club having a big section of land on there and how that, then the payment gets split up, that you kind of get into that then too, so.
And the other question is, can't, can't we just, I mean, maybe we can't do it now because we're not at the lake board sitting. But couldn't we just make an agreement with the lake boards to do the inspection of the pipe? And, and each, we would pay, we'd divide it up three ways? And, and do that as a 2023 thing and then if we discover anything, we could?
Well, what, what do you think it would cost to replace the pipe?
Um, well, I wouldn't recommend replacing it. I would recommend lining it.
Okay.
You know, I have no clue. I don't even know how much it would cost to inspect it. So I think that's my first step is to bring in a company. They tell me how much it's going to, because you got to plug it off. We got to wait for a time when we can do it, right? Right, I don't want to do it when I got seven days of rain coming because I'm going to have a plug in the inlet, right? So we have to stage it in a dry weather time. They would take a look inside the pipe and they would tell me, you know, how, what it, A, do you not need to do anything? There's a system for rating pipe integrity. They would use that system and they would tell me whether it needed to be lined or not.
How old is it?
No, it's original, so.
I'm all for you. Survey, line it. However much it is, just line it.
Well, now you can see why it's on my radar as a concern for me because it's, it was untouched. So that's like red flag, right? And it's a lynchpin in the entire system.
Yeah, let's, let's just do it.
Well, however much it is, and if you do an SAD, you have to have 51% of the-
The line, the pipe?
No, she's talking not the road.
No, no, the lake board.
The lake board's doing it.
Who pays for that?
It would be the SAD, or sorry, if they have the money in their accounts, they could pay it.
If they don't have the money in their account. So if they don't have the money in their account.
If it, if it falls outside of, you do for your budget. So yeah, depending on, it could fall right in where they wouldn't need to do an SAD.
And I would recommend it because it makes the pipe smaller.
It's marginal. It's, rather than digging it up.
We need the pipe bigger.
Well, but that's a full-scale change. I mean, the weir can't pass the water at this point, so a bigger tube in there, you know, is kind of fighting against the real evil, which is the width of the weir there. But that, that you're talking, I know replacing the pipes more than 1,500 bucks, right? So you go that route, you're probably 40, 50,000, right? And you got to dam up the lake while they're doing it. You got to dig the pipe up. That's why I just thought of lining. It, we line sewers all the time. We line water mains and they still have the carrying capacity. It's a, it's a quarter of an inch. It's, it's a fiberglass product. And it's, I mean, again, quarter of an inch max, that's in a thick area. But we don't diminish the carrying capacity of a sewer when we, when we line them. So it's negligible in that. It actually counteracts the roughness of the pipe and you get better flow. So it actually counter, it's really better in the end. Because, and there's no joints in the pipe and all that stuff, so.
It's like a facelift.
Yeah, or a, or a good foundation that they put on.
Talk about a small world. I actually used to sell dermatology products in the 90s and I used to go to Dr. Grackin to sell stuff. It all comes around, right? Now, I know you have some questions. You guys okay if we jump to Soi Martin?
Actually, I'm good.
Have you got them all answered already?
Yep, yep. I think we have some takeaways we could talk about.
Yeah, I'm wondering where are you going from here?
So I heard, you know, a generalized concern about the inlet pipe and an inspection of the pipe to determine what needed to be done. That's a lake board question, which we could do. That's a lake board question, which we could do, you know, we do need business meetings for these three lake boards anyway, and we'll put that on-
We do a joint business meeting that's publicly?
A joint would be better.
Instead of doing three separate?
We absolutely could do a joint.
Joint.
Because that way you're all together, we can actually make a decision altogether instead of having, coming back to each other.
And then- Danny, if I, if I could just jump in. There's been a lot of talk about lake board action. The township holds the easement. The township holds the easement for servicing, repairing. The way the original SAD was organized, it was a township SAD made up of the residents that are located within the three lake board districts. But it was a township SAD. And so maybe the, the way to proceed with this would be, maybe try to get some estimates on what it would take to take a survey to establish the existing condition of the inlet, present that to the lake boards, and see if they're willing to consider that. And then I think it may be small enough that the lake boards could just contribute the 1,500 and at least get the estimate so we know how much the estimate would be. And then survey the lake boards to see what the level of support would be for it. And if there's a sufficient level, then start the township SAD process.
Couldn't we do that at this joint lake board meeting that we're talking about?
Yeah, but I, what I'm saying is it needs to be,
Do homework at the-
It needs to be a township SAD because the township's the one that has the easement to access.
Is it township SAD to specific beneficiaries?
Yeah, just like any other SAD. It's, it's the benefited properties. Here, the benefited properties are the residents within the three lake boards, but the township is the structure for doing it.
So we could still do this group meeting and come, like you said, with homework to there of what it would be? I just think having all three of you at the table is a lot more efficient than having three separate meetings and then comparing notes later. We could move this a lot faster if we have a meeting together.
So what you're saying, Mark, just so I'm clear, is township has the easement. The township would be the one doing the work. The township would charge the lake boards for whatever the-
The township would charge the residents within the SAD, just like any other SAD.
We wouldn't do the work, though. We would source it out.
Well, right.
Yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd enter into the, we'd hire the contractors, but, I guess, it's a subtle distinction. It's not a lake board SAD.
The lake board beneficiaries are not the same?
The beneficiaries are going to be the same. But the entity organizing the special assessment district is the township. It's not a lake board project because it's not specific to the water quality of each lake.
So what you're saying is, we would need to do a, the lake, the township board would need to do an SAD process, which requires-
Exactly, and that's what was done for the original.
Which we would, until we knew that all these lake boards were in, or, sorry, lake riparians know that there's support for that to go forward. That's what I'm saying. We still need the lake representatives there.
And then the other item was the road commission and Club Drive. And beginning conversations with regard to that, you've got a meeting coming up.
Yeah.
You'll help facilitate a conversation. And then the third thing was potentially, I guess, there was a conversation about an engineer and a hydrologic study, but-
I don't, I think, I think we know, we're a very narrow world we live in. I don't think there's any real big changes to be made without making a crisis for somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Room for maneuver is very-
So then two takeaways. Did I miss one?
How do you, how do you get Ron's suggested changes considered to the operations, though?
We could put that on this agenda for that same meeting. Because the reason why I say you can't vote here is it wasn't noticed that that was something being voted on. So we do study sessions to get ideas, because we're not allowed to talk together outside of this.
Really?
So that we know what to put agenda. Believe it or not, we follow this. We're, we're allowed to talk one or, one-on-one, but I mean, you can't have more than three of us at a time.
You and Danny can't be in the same place talking about the business of the lake board. Unless we're in a meeting.
So study sessions give us a chance to learn what you're thinking so we can figure out what meetings publicly will be noticed of, hey, this is what's going to be voted on. Come give your opinions, because that way your, your groups are all represented.
Right, and that would kind of cross that hurdle. You know, I don't want these decisions made in a vacuum between two people, let's say, right? There's more entities involved with this, so, you know, we need buy-in across the board is the kind of concern of the township, that we're not catering to one group over the other, right? And really, my, again, my goal is protect the infrastructure that's out there, right? And I think, you know, I'm going to protect even the high water, the really high water people, right? I'm going to protect them from themselves too, right? So, because there's also other issues that come around, like the lawsuits and the, you know, and then again, I get it, you can't get under the bridge, you can't, you know, that's true in high and low water cases, so it's, it's a difficulty of that area, so.
And so the third item actually is to consider changes to the protocol at this joint business meeting.
Yeah, I, I think the protocol, there's been some suggestions to modify it. I think those suggestions need to be presented and received some feedback before the township goes ahead and modifies it, so.
And the more we can get in advance, the more we can put in the packet so people can review it and possibly vote on it that day. We definitely don't want something brought that day or just the day before. So if you have suggestions, even though the date's not set, get them to Noah now so that it's available for all of us for review.
Noah, I think you're probably already doing what Ron is recommending. But what Ron is saying is don't specify whether the valve be open or closed. I think if we remove that language, because you're already pretty much following what he's got under notes.
Okay.
Which could be attached to the operations protocol. So in the future, if it wasn't you or and Ryan out there managing it, somebody else would have a more detailed roadmap of how it's managed.
Yeah, and I would consider that. I would just caution that the valve was put in because in that 2011, the wettest year on record for Metro Detroit, right? There was flooding. They, the engineers stated that they believe the weir was unable to pass enough water. So they drilled that hole in the weir to allow extra capacity to pass water in an emergency or in these high-level situations. So I wouldn't want to take that out without the engineers looking at how that impacts my ability to control it at that point.
Okay.
Right, so that's, that, that's, that's why that was put in. And the whole thought behind that was, is that the old structure was leaky. And so that valve kind of took the place of the structure leaking water through it. How valid that is or not, I have no clue. Right, it sounds a little far-fetched to me, but the reality is the weir in 2011 and other years cannot pass the water fast enough to keep it from cresting the road there. So that's why that valve was put into play. Allowing us to augment that lake level at a greater ability, right?
Right, but I think Ron, Ron's point is that it should be not as rigid, right?
And if the engineers agree, that would be great.
Yeah, right. Which I don't think you're being rigid with it.
No, I bought, we, the valve was open and closed when it was supposed to be open even this spring, based on conversations we had.
So I don't think we're that far away.
No, what I want is the assurance from an entity that's not me or you or, you know, an engineer to tell me, okay, that all makes sense, you know, in the overall plan.
Agreed.
Well, and that's what comes back to-
This is what, my suggestions are basically what Ryan is doing right now.
And that's fine, and I got them, you know, at 6:59, so I have no clue. You know, I tried to read them and I saw that they looked in format very similar, but that's all that I got through in the 10 minutes.
It's improving the language, not the process.
I get it. My, my, you know, my understand, my falsehood at the beginning of this is that there were legal impediments to doing that. Now, it's really, comes down to agreement on what those changes are. You know, and more agreement on your guys' end, then have HRC check the work, you know?
This is just like a normal township SAD.
Because you guys, I mean, this is the, this discussion here just displays exactly, you know, the different views that are out there on whether the lake should be low or high, right? It's, everybody kind of has a, we need to have consensus. And I think everybody would enjoy operating that consensus.
And we shouldn't have been talking off, Mike, what we were talking about, that nuance of, is it a lake board SAD or a township SAD? Just to let everyone know too, township SADs are still where you do get 51%. Somebody from your area would go around, we just funded it where the mechanism-
Mark, can't you look at that?
But we're not, I just want to make-
So we can just approve it on the-
Where the lake board can just say yes.
It would be a lot easier if the lake boards can approve the costs.
Okay, so what you're saying is a township SAD where the lake boards are the-
Designers.
I'd have to look at that. I've never seen that done before.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, with that mainst-
Mark, one other thing to look at is also, we have that POA from Forest, Island, and Lower Long Lake that, you know, the Terry Kunnahan thing. There's lots of money there too. If this is a few thousand dollars, I think, and that represents, so that's all the riparians. So Terry would, I mean, I'm not the president, I'm only the, I think, the vice president.
Doesn't include upper.
Terry would.
It includes upper, but not Island. Noah's-
No, it's got Island, Forest, Lower, and Island. It doesn't include upper.
So includes one of those.
But that's who used to maintain the weir anyway, was that group, right? When Bob Witbault did it. So if it's a few thousand dollars, Terry probably would just pay for it.
Yeah, we have a meeting on Saturday. I'll bring it up.
My sense would be that, you know, just to find out the answer of the condition of the pipe, people would make that investment, right? It comes down to then if you got alternatives and how much does it cost to dig the hole, right? If that ends up being how it goes. But I, my sense would be that people would want to know that answer, right? And, and I, it will, it probably won't be much over 1,500 either, but I just, just to get anybody, even a plumber to come out, it's 500 bucks now, so, like, you know? I can't really speak to how much that's going to be, so.
So put this short, two things.
The initial funding is going to be to cover the engineer to look at the condition of the intake pipe and also to review any potential change in the protocol. Everything else, after the, assuming petitions are signed or however the SAD is structured, one of the initial processes there would be the design of the structure. That would all be rolled into the SAD cost if the decision's made to redo the intake pipe.
Okay, so we're in another process at that point, right? Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? I think we have some marching orders.
Yes, and we're going to try to set another joint meeting, a business meeting in this instance to address these questions.
And I can probably get an estimate out of the company in a couple weeks. So as long as that meeting's a couple weeks out or something, I can have at least what that cost is going to be to go in and take a look at it.
I volunteer time to help us schedule something.
We do what ain't going to be need, so.